All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to Bible class. If you're out in the parlor or just in the North Ex visiting and you're intending to come in, this would be the time to make your move. We are getting back into the book of Exodus this morning after two weeks of Pastor Rogo apologizing for the resurrection. Or not really, not in the way, of course, that we understand typically use the word apology, but giving the little more facts around the resurrection. We'll just wait for a few people yet to still coming in. There are lesson sheets available. They're the same ones as we had a few weeks back, the last time I taught. We got partway through that and time did not allow me to produce new ones this week. And if you're tuning in online, welcome also. The Bible class notes are available on the church website. They're the same notes that we have here and you can download those or just open them up on another screen if you would like. And questions are always welcome during our Bible class time together. If you're here in the church, obviously, the old fashioned way works really well. Just stick up your hand. And if you're online, my email address is there on the screen and you're welcome to shoot me an email either now or a little bit later. Maybe we could get somebody to close the back doors. I'm hearing a lot more noise than... I'm having trouble concentrating. Anyway, just a few quick funnies, I hope are funny anyway. The first one might be a little touchy for some who, like me, had their hopes up for something better in the NHL playoffs, but I was out west when the Leafs were eliminated and we got to see a little longer on the broadcast maybe than the people did here in the east. We got to see the trophy presentation to the Leafs following their loss. Each of them were given new golf bags for the summer. The 56th annual presentation of the golf bag to the Leafs. I'm kidding. The Oilers went out too, so we're all in the same boat together. Couple of weeks ago, we were up with our son Aaron and his family as we celebrated his installation at St. Luke's in Ottawa, which went very well. But as is the case when you go and hang out with young ones, the oldest of whom is 10, you get reintroduced to children's television. And this is apparently one of the big stars of children's TV today, a very loud and obnoxious pig named Peppa. And then I went to the grocery store and I bought a Christmas present for the girls based on Peppa the Pig. Cubed pork, the Peppa the Pig Jigsaw Puzzle. If they had that, I would have gotten it, but anyway, yes. All right, and since it's kind of gift giving time here, I bought a book while I was west for Jennifer. She doesn't really need this, but I saw this and I thought this was very, very funny. Easy Funeral Hits with the old one chord. You remember those organs that you just pushed one finger and it made all the noise? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Easy Funeral Hits. Yes, there you go. This is the part that I like the best, the grief chord chart. Special chords for grieving. All right, and one last one. This is just plain punny. This is sort of because Pastor Rogo is here and he likes puns, but here we go. "This poor creature hit an iceberg. What happens next remains to be seen. Let us pray." Oh, that's terrible, terrible, terrible. Anyway, all right, let's get back at it here again. We are looking at the gospel according to Moses, the story of God's people, His Exodus, bringing them up out of the land of Egypt, making them His own people. We are camped at Mount Sinai. We've been here for a while now and will be here for today at least and probably next week as well yet as we unpack some of what happens to the people there. The lesson sheet that you have, as I said before, is one that we have looked at already and we're going to spend a bit of time on that and then hopefully actually go a little bit beyond. I have extra material prepared, but I didn't get time to put it all into a full sheet to hand out today. Where we're at in the story is God has given the Ten Commandments to the people. He has taught them how His people live and how they are to respond to the grace that He has given to them. And He immediately then begins to unpack some of that for the people. Now, this particular topic we've talked about already comes right at the end of chapter 20 and is just a brief note about altars. We've talked about this a couple of times, but just a reminder that the altars that the people were to make, the relationship they were to have to the things of worship, this was to be very much focused upon God, not upon their own abilities or the things they had done. So the altars were to be made of uncut stones and already in Exodus, chapter 20, and we'll come back to this in a little bit, a little bit later, two really basic categories of offerings and sacrifices to be offered. One are the guilt offerings, which are burnt, and the fellowship offerings, which are shared. A little bit of it is sacrificed, but then the rest is shared with the people. All right, we'll leave that and move on. Like I say, we've talked about that a couple of times already. Now we come into a section that is known as the Book of the Covenant. And this occupies the next three chapters, 21, 22, and 23. And it's one of those sections that when you are reading through the book of Exodus, you hit it and you kind of go, oh, no more storyline here, no more dialogue back and forth. It all looks like a bunch of rules and details. And the temptation is to just either not read it at all, just skip over, to when the action starts again, or at very best to give it just a quick skim and pick up the contents. Now, we're not going to dig deep into everything that's revealed in these next few chapters, but I do want to take a kind of a high level view and kind of dig down at a couple of points because what the Book of the Covenant is all about is helping to better understand what the law really means, what the commandments really mean, and it also, we'll find as we go through this, there are some very significant points of connection to the New Testament as well. The Book of the Covenant, just the title here, I'll just say something about this as well. This is just an interesting... People have pondered for a long time, well, let me rephrase the start of this, for a very long time, everybody just assumed that Moses was the author of the first five books of the Bible. And then about 175 to 200 years ago, scholars began to sort of debate that and wonder, did Moses really write this? How could he have written some of the things that are in there? And all kinds of questions. And various theories were advanced as to when these first five books might have been written and who the authors might have been. Did they take a bunch of sources that were out there and kind of weave them all together to make one coherent story? And part of the assumption that was made is that, well, back that far, they didn't really write these things down, you know? They only based this on oral tradition. They just passed the stories down verbally. Well, certainly, there was a lot more of that than there is now, the passing on of stories in a verbal form. But what this Book of the Covenant teaches us and reminds us is that indeed, back in those days, they did write stuff down. They did have books. They did write. And Moses was the human scribe, if you will, that writes down the Book of the Covenant, which then gets embedded into the larger Book of Exodus, which is then part of the entire Torah, the first five books of the Bible, Genesis through Deuteronomy. So this is a kind of an important little... I had somebody ask me this, you know, about a year ago, sent an email wanting to know a little bit about the history of the Bible. How did the Bible come that we have today come to be the Bible? How do we know, you know, that Moses was an author? And this is one of those, you know, kind of internal bits of evidence. Yeah, they did write things down. You know, society was that advanced at that point in time. And, you know, Moses, having been raised in Egypt, certainly was very familiar with how to put a book together. He'd probably read several in his life by this point in time. All right, enough about the book itself and the background. What are the topics of this book? Well, surprisingly, or perhaps maybe not, the first topic is slavery. Why do you think that might be a good first topic? I'll just throw this out to you. I'm tired of hearing my own voice. Absolutely, because they themselves were slaves. Right. All of these people who were coming up out of Egypt with Moses, all they had ever known in their life was slavery. And what they had known as slavery was probably, well, was slavery of the worst kind. Slavery based on their ethnicity, their culture, slavery that was largely consisted of hard work and toil and not a pleasant experience. And so what God wants to do right off the bat is to give them a different definition, to kind of redefine slavery. Or as the NIV puts it, to use a different word, servant. Now, there's great debate whether the Hebrew word for servant and slave, you know, means, what exactly did it mean? But we get a pretty good idea from the context here as to slavery or servanthood was to be a very, very different thing for the people of Israel than they had experienced. No doubt, and they had foreigners with them, no doubt, they would have people who served them and who helped them, who would be their employees. But you see a different tone right off the very beginning of Exodus, chapter 21, where it talks about Hebrew servants. 21 verse 2 reads, "If you buy a Hebrew servant, he is to serve you for six years; but in the seventh year, he shall go free without paying anything. If he comes alone, he is free to go alone. If he has a wife when he comes, then she is to go with him. If his master gives him a wife and she bears him sons and daughters, the woman and her children still belong to her master, and only the man will go free." That's a little odd to our ears and I have no explanation for why that might be. But the servant might also declare, you know, "I love my master, my wife, and my children, and I don't want to go free." And then the master must take him before the judges and they pierce his ear and he becomes a servant for life, but more as part of the family than as, you know, someone who is to be, you know, selling himself into a life of misery and woe. And on and on, it kind of goes from there. Servanthood is not something you force on anybody in God's view. Servanthood is voluntary. It has an expiry date. You serve for six years and then you're given the option of going free. A person who sold as a slave, the second paragraph of this talks about perhaps a person selling a daughter into servitude. This was a way of generating income, but this was, these people, if this happened to them, they were to, we work hard, they were to be housed, paid a fair wage, and given their freedom after six years. And involuntary servanthood or enslaving somebody is a crime, capital crime. You die for that. So a very, very different model of how workers and employees interact and a realization that, you know, a person might be your servant, but they still have all the dignity, all the basic, you know, deserve all the respect and everything that comes along with just being a human being. They're not really property that you can do with however you want. So a very different understanding of that. Any questions about that? I don't know that there's... James, yeah?
When the land of South Dakota was taken over under Josh, of course, there are not some people that are allowed to be enslaved by people.
Yeah, there's, like all of these things, there's little examples along the way where things don't typically fit the pattern. It's kind of like life today, you know? I mean, you can kind of make a general rule and then there's little exceptions that happen along the way. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So I say, just a very different kind of work atmosphere. It kind of comes in, you know, like, I mean, maybe the way to look at it in a kind of neat way, and it sort of ties into what we're going to talk about in a few minutes, is sort of like the person is given almost a bit of a chance for a sabbatical at the end of six years. You get your little break from this and you can do with that as you want. If you want to go free for a little while, great, wonderful. All right, all right. Then comes another section, and this one's important because it's something that Jesus refers to and sometimes is used to drive a wedge between the Old Testament and the New Testament. The whole subject of the eye for an eye and the tooth for the tooth. And let me just read to you a little bit out of where I... Trouble. One of the things I should do is bring the Bible I use at home. There we are, which has all the markings in it. And anyway, that's, anyway. The actual, the rule itself, as is often the case in Hebrew... This is a longer section, begins at 21 verse 12 and goes all the way to the end of the chapter. The rule is smack dab in the middle of the chapter, of what remains of the chapter, which is often the way it is in Hebrew writing. Comes, there's a whole bunch of cases. What happens if someone does this and someone does that? And somebody kidnaps somebody and two people fight and one hits the other with a stone and all these other kinds of things. And it's followed by the same sort of thing, but the actual principle is laid out in the middle. "Where there is serious injury, you are to take life for life, eye for eye, tooth for tooth, hand for hand, foot for foot, burn for burn, wound for wound, bruise for bruise." Now, what, why is that in there? Why would you make this kind of a statement? Well, as I say here on the sheet, this covers all various crimes that may happen, various infractions. The basic point that's trying to be made here, that is being made here, is that the punishment is to fit the crime. What God is trying to forbid here is people taking the law into their own hands. So I do something to you, that doesn't necessarily give you the right to kill me. But the point here is that in all of life, the punishment is to fit the crime and not be more than. I mean, that's a very natural human temptation, you know? When somebody does something to us, is to return the favor and then maybe magnify it a little bit so they learn and don't do it again. And we get our revenge on the person. And that's not the kind of society God is building. Yes, there will be crimes. Yes, there will be issues that need to be solved, but the punishment is to be equal. You know, if I hit you and that causes a bruise, that doesn't give you the right to chop my hand off. And that's kind of what's happening here. And Jesus uses, we'll talk about this later in the New Testament, in the Sermon on the Mount, He unpacks this a little bit further. And because I think, you know, kind of what tends to happen with rules like this is they get applied very arbitrarily. And, well, you know, you killed somebody off with your head, you know? You burnt somebody, well, let's put the torch to you for a few minutes. And what you do is cause, you know, more suffering. And Jesus, when He unpacks this in the Sermon on the Mount, you know, He kind of points out, you know, this isn't some sort of, you gotta do it this way. You've kind of misinterpreted the whole thing here. You're not just, you know, to start smacking each other around. This comes up in Matthew, chapter 5, verse 38. He gives a different way. He says, you know, that's all there, but listen to this. He says, "You've heard that it was said, 'Eye for eye and tooth for tooth.' But I tell you, don't resist an evil person. If someone strikes you on the right cheek, turn to him the other also. If someone wants to sue you and take your tunic, let them have your cloak as well. If someone forces you to go one mile, go two. Give to the one who asks and do not turn away from the one who wants to borrow from you." So this isn't to be seen as, you know, I think what happens and undoubtedly happened in societies, this all became very arbitrary. You know, here's the crime, here's the punishment. We don't worry about the circumstances or any mitigating factors or anything like that. You know, you hit somebody, they can hit you. And Jesus is saying, well, yeah, okay, that's, yeah, you could, but you're totally justified in doing that if that's the way you want to do it, but you don't have to. It's not absolutely necessary that you do that sort of thing. You can be merciful to each other as well. Like I say, people tend to take passages like this and they try to drive a wedge between the Old Testament and the New Testament, say, you know, God is this God of vengeance in the Old Testament, eye for eye, tooth for tooth, you know? And in the New Testament, well, He's this God of love that you forgive and, no, He's the same God of love all the way along. He's established a standard. You don't have to follow. You can't go beyond that, but there are other ways of handling your problems besides poking each other's eyes out, you know? And Jesus provides that rationale because it's, you know, it's always been there, just people forget these things. Comments, questions? Don't want to generate any arguments online here. James, yeah?
Were there safe houses for people that had committed a crime to flee to until they were judged?
Yes, yes, there were cities and towns and houses of refuge, yes, where you could go if you had, if you were on the run, you could go somewhere and you were guaranteed your safety there until such matter, time as the matter could be heard by the judges. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. That's again, part of it. That comes a little later, but yeah, yeah, there was, there's mercy in with all this. Kind of a good point. Tim, yes, hello?
The question about I brought you for two, that in Exodus is more of a judicial instruction to the people as a whole. And if I remember right, that it was forbidden for you to get vengeance of your own offense. So if one person does something to another person, you would go to the judicial people and lay your complaint out and they would decide what would happen.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, it's a good point that Tim makes, that, you know, this isn't just giving people license to, you know, you hit me, I hit you, you know, kind of thing, because you know what happens when that happens. But yes, we see this already while they're at Sinai, there's an entire establishment of a kind of a judicial framework begins to take place. It's already happened, been hinted at before they got to Mount Sinai, when Gethro, Moses' father-in-law, sees how overworked Moses is and says, "You idiot, appoint some other people to help you. You can't be judging everything that's going on here. This is going to make you crazier than you already was," you know, sort of thing. And so, yeah, so, yeah, there's a framework. Yeah, you just didn't go and start poking other, you know? I like the, it's all fun and games until somebody puts an eye out, you know, kind of thing, go around poking each other's eyes out, you know, kind of stuff. Okay, thank you, good point. All right, any other questions, comments? Let's move on. A whole bunch of property laws come next. This is gripping. But again, establishes the same principle. The situations addressed in chapter 22, we won't, we won't go on for too long about this. It covers all various kinds of property. You know, here's one that's, I'll just, I'm just picking one out of the, that gives you just a flavor of this. And coming back from Alberta, it speaks, maybe an important word. "If a fire breaks out and spreads into the thorn bushes so that it burns shocks of grain or standing grain or the whole field, the one who started the fire must make restitution." Let me tell you, you know, we've had a cold spring here and not much sun. We ain't got nothing compared to what's going on in Alberta. I got up on Tuesday morning to catch the plane home. The entire time I was out west, the wind, for the most part, was blowing from the south, which on the prairies is a warm wind. It's coming up from the deserts of the United States. It's very dry, very, very dry when this happens. And what's fueling the fire, somewhere between when I went to bed on Monday night and when I got up at 5:00 on Tuesday morning to catch my plane home, the wind had shifted and it was coming down from the north. And it was, it was like out of the apocalypse in Edmonton and much to my amazement, I had a connecting flight that went through Calgary, worse in Calgary. Like it just was so thick. When I got home here and my suitcase came off the conveyor belt at Breslau, there was actually ash on it from what was in the air. And I got a few other pictures to my son-in-law. Oh, there, we've had our, we've got more people going into more interesting things in our family all the time. My son-in-law is actually the deputy fire chief for the Red Deer County Fire Department. He was seconded out into the bush to fight fires and he was there for two weeks and he showed me some just utterly unbelievable pictures of the devastation. Anyway, I digress. And our daughter out there, Belinda, she works for emergency measures and they're busy trying to move people from nursing home to nursing home. When I was at their place, I just, I'll just go out for a coffee. She works from home. I said, "I think I'm just an annoyance here. I'll just go get a coffee. I'll be back in a while." Anyway, yeah, so if fire breaks out and spreads into the thorn bushes, the person starting the fire must make restitution. The idea here is that people are to be fairly compensated. If you do something to somebody else's property, just as if you do something to their person, they're entitled to compensation for that. And it goes through various little, you know, various levels of responsibility and things like that. All right, comments, questions, observations? If you steal it, give it back or compensate. Okay. Then there come a whole bunch of social laws, and this takes a great, long section. And once again here, we're not going to go into great detail here just because, again, it's, you could drill down and, you know, find all kinds of things here, but amongst society, same basic principle applies here. But amongst society, same basic principle applies here. The themes here are impartiality and a care for the poor and the powerless. The, the people who are at the bottom of the social order are to be accorded the same level of respect as the people who are at the top. For instance, Exodus, chapter 23, verse 8. "Do not deny justice to your poor people in their lawsuits. Have nothing to do with a false charge, and do not put an innocent person to death. Do not oppress the alien; for you yourselves know how it feels to be aliens, because you were aliens in Egypt." Okay? So just, again, establishing a society that is, is based on, you know, other things than they have experienced. Slaves are to be treated respectfully. Crimes are to be, you know, punishment is to equal the crime. People who do damage to other people's property are to make restitution. The lowest people in society are to be respected and accorded the same dignity as the rich guy. It all, it's just, you know, stuff that we today, you know, maybe take as kind of, yeah, for granted. But when you've grown up your whole life in slavery, you got to teach these real basic, basic details of how people's lives are to live. And then the book of the covenant comes to a close with a very, very important topic, the whole topic of the Sabbath. And it goes back to where it began. You know, this whole discussion began with altars. And what kind of altars the people were to have and not to have. But there's, that's part of a bigger picture as well, the Sabbath laws. And I'll just read these because they're, they're, it's short and easy to get our minds around. "For six years you are to sow your field and harvest the crops; but during the seventh year let the land lie unplowed and unused. The poor among your people may get food from it, and the wild animals may eat what they leave. Do the same with your vineyard and your olive grove." So, okay, the field goes fallow would be the terms we use today in farming. For a year, one year out of seven, you don't plant anything in there. And you let the poor. And whatever grows in that field, you know, if you spilt some seeds while you're harvesting, and they spring up and they grow, that's not for the landowner. He should have taken care of his needs in the first six years and be able to live off of that for the seventh year. And this is for the poor. This is for the animals. This is for others to enjoy. And the same with the vineyard, and the same with the olive grove. The vines are going to grow. They don't take, you know, one year and six off. They just keep producing. And in that one year, that wasn't for the owner of the vineyard. It was for other people. And the same with the olives. And then he focuses it down from the annual observances of Sabbath to the weekly observance. Six days you do your work, but on the seventh day you do not work, so that neither your ox nor your donkey, even they have to rest too. And the slave born in your household, and the alien as well, that they may be refreshed. So, again, you know, going back to some of the beginning stuff about slavery and servitude and things like this, these people are to be, you know, given Sabbath years, you know? And, and also to be given the Sabbath each week, so that they can refresh and strengthen themselves again. "Be careful to do everything I have said to you. Do not invoke the names of other gods, and do not let them be heard on your lips." That's how that little section ends. This is, of course, something that, you know, we've lost totally in today's world. I mean, the whole idea of actually taking time to rest, physically, spiritually, we're losing that very fast. And, you know, kind of, and I know even in my own lifetime. Back when I was a kid, you know, Sunday was the longest day of the week because you couldn't go do anything, you know? I mean, there you were, stuck with your parents. Monday can't come, oh, but Monday's school. Well, that's all right. It's at least doing something, you know? We have that innate desire to do work. But God also, you know, created us with a need to rest and to, you know, receive what our bodies need to keep going. I'm learning that as I get older. Actually, every once in a while, I kind of just go, you know, today is a day where my expectations for getting something done are really quite, try to keep them low. Yeah, but it's hard. I struggle with this all the time. I don't know, maybe somebody's found a golden answer that is how you do this in your life. If you do write a book, I'll be the first guy to buy it. All right.
But I mean, I would presume that not all landowners were on the same schedule as far as the...
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I know in, later it gets defined, there are certain years of Jubilee and things like that, which are kind of a national sort of break. But yeah, one would presume there's some staggering of this going on. Yeah, so that, you know, not the whole country doesn't have nothing to eat, or, you know, there's some, some... Yeah, I'm sure they're probably on a practical level or something like that, yeah, yeah. Any other comments, observations? Yeah?
The one seven, is that from the origin of the Bible, tied in, is that what that...
Potentially, that's a subject I haven't really thought about, whether that, how one informs the other, but possibly, yeah. Typically, it's a tenth. It's a tenth. But again, yeah, you get the idea, though, that there is a, you know, a voluntary giving up. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, for sure. All right. There was a question that had come a few weeks back, and when I was last teaching, and I didn't see it in time to respond to it here in, in the session. Someone raised this Bible passage, and it's kind of an aside, but, but an important one nonetheless, from Romans, where Paul is talking a little bit about Sabbath observance and those sorts of things. "One person considers one day more sacred than another; another considers every day alike. Each of them should be fully convinced in their own mind. Whoever regards one day as special, does so to the Lord; whoever eats meat, does so to the Lord, for they give thanks to God; and whoever abstains, does so to the Lord and gives thanks to God." Now, Paul here, what he's talking about in this particular passage, he's talking to the Roman church, which is a church that is like a lot of the others, but maybe more so, a mix of Jews and Gentiles. So you can well imagine that if you were in a congregation, in that particular congregation, the Jewish members of the congregation would probably still hold a very high view of Saturday as, you know, what we know as Saturday, as the Sabbath day. And so they would want to honor that day in the traditional manner, and have that as their day of rest. Well, of course, Roman society, the Gentiles, they knew nothing of that sort of thing. They didn't have those kind of days in their work-life. Every, they were kind of more like, we are. Every day is, is go-for-it kind of day. And so some of them would not necessarily have this embedded into their spiritual DNA, if you will, like the Jewish members did. And what Paul is encouraging people here is to, to be convinced in their own mind what's right for them, and then by implication, to be tolerant of those who see things a little bit differently. So the modern-day application of this would be, you know, what if we were to decide, and some congregations have, you know, moved off of Sunday morning as the main time for church? Well, as long as you're doing it for the right reasons and you're doing it to glorify God, fine, you know? You know, I'll use, you know, Roman Catholic churches as an example. Most Roman Catholic churches have several masses over the weekend. Which is the best-attended one? Saturday night. Yeah, that's the best-attended mass at most Roman Catholic churches. Why? Well, I guess people find it more convenient or more fitting to their schedule. And, and we would go, well, it's, you know, it's still church. It's still, it's still, it's valid, you know? We happen to revere Sunday a little bit more. But, you know, all the days are, you know, we can, you can praise God on any day. There's no, no law against praising God. And so, you know, we have to, you know, be careful with each other in these sorts of things. Same with things like eating meat. Some people, you know, well, it wasn't part of their, you know, you don't eat meat. You know, again, maybe our Roman Catholic friends, you know, who some still observe Friday as a no-meat day. Fine, that's their spirituality. And their faith, that's fine. As long as they're doing it to the glory of God, great. And, you know, all those kind of things. So in the New Testament, of course, you know, the, Jesus kind of does away with the rigidity of the Sabbath. You know, he utters the statement, "The Sabbath was made for man, not man, for the Sabbath." And what he's contradicting is the, you know, what people do in these sorts of situations. And what people had done in Jesus' times, they'd made up all kinds of other rules about what you did on the Sabbath and what you didn't do on the Sabbath. And, and the whole day became this, you know, you know, trying to obey rules. And you know as well as I do, if the first thing on your mind is what can I do and what can I not do? And what, what am I supposed to do? And how far can I walk? And all that, are you resting? Not likely, right? Because you're thinking all the time, I got to obey the rule. What's the rule? What's the rule? What am I supposed to do? You know, can I use my scissors or not? You know, and, and, but the paper needs to be cut, you know? Am I breaking? You know, that's not restful. That's, that's just winding us up all the more. And so Jesus cuts through all of that and reminds us that the whole purpose of this, the whole purpose of the Sabbath was for us to have the time and the rest that we need, and also to be strengthened spiritually by God through His Word. All right. We're going to leave it there. They need to do a sound check for the 11 o'clock service. And we're gonna, what's left on this sheet will just very quickly take up next time and then move ahead. One of the things, I'll just say this so you know where we're going here, and perhaps whet your appetite for what's coming. When we get to, when we think of Mount Sinai and the experience that the people of Israel had there, we tend to focus most of our thinking on the Ten Commandments. And as we've been doing this morning, kind of the spin-off of those commandments. And that's all valid because that's the first big thing that happens there. But there is a second big thing that happens at Mount Sinai that doesn't get nearly the attention it deserves. Anybody want to take a wild guess? Or maybe you know what the second thing is? Comes in a very long section that's very tedious to read and that a lot of people just glaze over, but we're going to do this in a more fun way than tedium. It's all about the tabernacle. Anybody want to know what the tabernacle was all about? This was God dwelling with His people. And, and actually, in the overall scope and scheme of the Bible, the thing that gets picked up on much more, I would argue, in the New Testament from the Sinai experience is the second thing, the tabernacle. And we're going to start next week by looking at that. We're not going to go into, you know, all the little itty-bitty details. We're going to take a high-level view of some of what's in Exodus to get the main point of, of this is how God is among us so that we can see the same thing in our life today. We know the commandments apply to us, but so too does the second half of what happens at Mount Sinai. And we're going to begin to dig into that next time. So that will serve as a focus. And the end of this, the book of the covenant really just kind of slides right into the tabernacle. Here. Oh, the attendance sheets, gee whiz, yes, I'm crying out loud. Can I let the guy go for a couple of Sundays? And then he doesn't know what he's doing anymore. There we go, pass those back. Any, any last-minute comments, questions, observations? We have a few seconds here. Anything else people wanted to? Right, okay, in this Bible passage, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, there are certain things that, yeah, the key that Paul talks about later in other places in the New Testament is that, you know, for some people's conscience, a certain thing, they can't do that. You know, it's, it's not for them. And, and you don't want to offend people's consciences. And so, yeah, what one person may deem to be all right, another person may say, nope. And you never want to, you don't want to tread on other people's consciences, that's right. So, you know, the classic case that Paul brings up is meat that's sacrificed to idols. For some people, you know, a steak is a steak. You know, it matters to them where it came from. To other people, just the fact that it had been in the idol's temple and been part of the worship, you know, was, nope, you don't eat that. And Paul says, you got to, you know, who's right? Both here. And you got to just respect those differences. Yeah, absolutely. Let's close with a word of prayer.